Oh yeah.
Missing a gavel, but I'm gonna go ahead and try and uh call this meeting to order. Monday, November twentieth, roll call shows. That powers, so Larry way. To merit. Are in Leo and I'm here uh on site and we got Sonia, Sarah and Jeff remote. We'll be understanding that Jeff may be popping in and out. We're actually probably not popping in. We've only got one or one order of business, I think, on here. So uh yeah, so we'll we'll go right to uh, I I guess agenda review. Does anyone have any? Questions, concerns, adjustments? Requests? Hearing none. We'll go to new business. First order of business twenty-three, two seventeen, and board authorizing the town council chair to execute an agreement with the firm. Provide professional services to support Orno's town council search for a new town manager. Motion. To approve?
I think it's just a committee meeting, right? Okay, sorry.
So we need a motion, sorry.
My bad. So moved.
Second?
I'll second. And then we need to discuss, I think, to figure out what firm exactly we're we're looking at, right?
Yes. Yes, just say yes.
Yes. Order. Okay, so we are we discussing the whole?
Which one we're gonna pick, right?
Great, okay. Got you.
Oh, here we go.
Anybody wanna start with?
I'd love to hear from Sarah again if she's got availability to connect with us from where she is.
I'm here. Dan, do you have specific questions for me?
Just if there's anything that came in after your last update to us and then we've gotten, you know, we've talked, we've talked about it in meetings and we've gotten email updates and one, you know, I wanted to thank you for all the work you did to bring the information. You've got, I think we have three pretty good options in front of us to consider, and I wanted to thank you for bringing it, see if you had anything. Anything new for us based on any last correspondence or anything like that from the? I guess they're not respondents, but the people that you spoke with, the firms that you spoke with.
Um, yeah, I don't have any new update from emails or that I hadn't forwarded on. I did spend some time over the weekend just looking back at the proposals and at the websites and at the messages I had sent to council. I did realize that, you know, one thing I didn't bring forth is that um there is a difference between the SGR company and the Baker Tilly company in terms of um their focus as companies. Um Baker Tilly's focus is much broader than just um executive search and recruitment. Um and leadership training. And SGR really focuses not only, but almost entirely on search, recruitment and leadership training. So um for me personally, that tipped my opinion a bit this weekend when I went looking back. That might not affect anybody else, but I know we, if we're gonna go with a national level search firm, I know those firms kind of tout that one of the things that happens is their recruiters talk to each other and make sure that anyone who's applying to a job, you know, at any of their jobs is notified of all their jobs. So um you know, SGR has twenty-six recruiters working at a time, Baker Tilly only has six. So that's a bit different, and I don't really think that I had realized that before, so I didn't really send that out to folks. Um so for me personally, between those two, I think I'm leaning more toward SGR. If we're gonna do a national level firm, I'd like to have the firm that has the broadest network talking to each other. Um likewise, they run a huge job board, like sixteen thousand people on their LinkedIn account and forty thousand on their email list from all the trainings that they run. Which, as I went back through, is not something that Baker Tilly is um offering or having at that level. So that's a little different, that I don't think I highlighted that out and didn't fully realize myself till I went back through and looked at the website. Um Baker Tilly is just as big a company. Uh it's just that the majority of their work, if you look at their staff, most of their staff are CPAs and their majority of their work is accounting and financial advising and um a whole other branch of stuff that isn't even for municipalities. So they have a much broader thing and only six people actually doing the recruiting. That's the only new thing I would say that I saw. Um everything else I already had sent out to you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that we also see that Baker Tilly was a little bit more expensive if we were to want to add any additional services. I mean, it was already coming in a a little bit more than SGR.
Yes, that's correct. The um if we had them do a survey, it's more expensive and most noticeably if we hired them to do a uh if we wanted to bring an outside company in to do a community um uh input event. Um one of those could be included with SGR's first visit, as long as we told them it was a priority and during those two and a half days. Um for Baker Tilly, it's not included and an amount was higher than I originally guestimated. Um they had sent me eleven thousand something for doing three of those meetings, which made me assume that one meeting would be three to four thousand. But I did forward to you, they later sent us the quote for one meeting and it was six thousand one hundred just to come run one. So that's correct.
And so for S SGR, would additional be an additional charge or was it the one included if we did it upfront?
So there we, if we want more than one Leo, they they charge, it's three thousand plus travel expenses, so somewhere between three thousand and four thousand, depending on where the facilitator is coming from. They do have some facilitators that are based right here in Maine or New Hampshire who would have less travel time. Um but three to four thousand, but the first one, they said could be free as part of our initial two and a half days. Um as long as we told them that was a priority during our, the two and a half days. They customize those first two and a half days to the kind of meetings that we prioritize. So if we said that's not a priority, we want individual stakeholder meetings or more, they do staff meetings, they do council meetings, all those things are included, but if we said, you know, it's not a priority for us, we'd rather you put your extra time in those two and a half days into meeting. I don't know, more people at the university or more groups in town. They would do that if we said uh one public meeting, input meeting open to the whole community was our priority. They said as long as it fit in the two and a half days, there would be no additional charge. After that, if we wanted more, they would be three to four thousand-ish each. Um Baker Tilly each one, six thousand one hundred uh uh for one, eleven thousand six hundred for three. They didn't quote me for two, Leo, but there aren't any for free.
And I mean, there's nothing precluding us from, say, we go with somebody like SGR. Where we have some sort of community engagement as part of their initial visit, something precluding us from also not doing our own, I mean, we're, I think we've got a fairly competent group here on the council of people who can organize community events, perhaps. Uh the even just for the potluck, I mean, I I wonder what the rules are around that and how we notice it and all the rest, but perhaps having some time for community input at a potluck or something, uh or having that be a regular part of potlucks for a few months, um just having like a survey people can fill out if they wanna come up to a table. I wonder if there are ways that you can sort of supplement the work that they're doing with uh just some some basic additional opportunities for the public to give us um input about what they're looking for in a manager and um just generally what they wanna see in terms of direction for the town as we develop a strategy going forward with whoever the new town manager ends up being.
Both companies said that was entirely fine with them, as many of those events as we want to run on our own. Um either before the company starts or concurrent are fine. Um no, they said, great.
Okay.
I'll chime in and uh remind folks, I did um make a first draft of a community feedback survey that we can easily revise and could get sent out sort of ASAP. So if that got buried in your inbox, I'll try to resend it, but I do think there would be real value to thinking about um sending out a community input survey pretty soon in this process. Um and I'd love your thoughts on that. And I also think, I'm really curious, kind of, this feels like a really important decision we're making, so I want to hear kind of what each council member is thinking about this and make sure everyone gets a chance to speak. So um I'll go and say, having reviewed all of the proposals um in quite a bit of detail and really sat with it. Um I am, uh I would prefer one of the two sort of national level search firms to me. Um the added price tag um does feel worth it to really um cast a wide net and and be sort of looking to uh attract someone who's gonna be a great fit for Orino um. And of the two, for some of the reasons that have been shared, but uh additionally, just in terms of on articulation of uh the sort of mission and vision of the organization and the kind of leadership that they they try to build and support. I was gravitating toward SGR as um as the firm between them and Baker Baker Tilly. Um so that's, that's where I'm at personally, but it wasn't uh all three of the firms that we're considering seem to me like they are well qualified and capable of helping us conduct a really meaningful search that I think have um every opportunity for success. So I really would like to hear from all members of council what your initial reactions were and kind of go from there.
Yeah, I was just about to speak yet. I was pushing for just the um not as, not as thrilled about a national search last time, and I've kind of come around a little bit on that. Um and I do, I I think I'm leaning, um again, I think we, I think we have two national, I am leaning towards the national. I do think we have two, two very confident firms that could accomplish what we need to accomplish uh very well. Um I I I lean towards Baker Philly uh primarily for the start date, um I think January, I think January fifteenth. And and I assume when they say that's when they would start, that's when they would start, but it's probably not unheard of that. You know, a contract that they're on might run longer than anticipated and so taking that, e- even even taking that at face value, that that start date is solid. I think that puts us behind a bit and uh so it's just for that, re- really, again, I think they're both very competent companies and would do a great job for us. I would prefer to have someone at the helm sooner, and I understand they can, we can do some stuff and we can decide. I I'd like to have someone grabbing the grabbing the helm and kind of controlling this thing sooner than later, and where Baker Tilly is able to start when we sign the contract, I think that that for me tips me towards them, so. That's my take.
I I think um I'm glad we're gravitating towards the idea of having a a national search. And I like the idea that both of these, both of the firms have the capacity to to do a an event at the end, the process with the community, kind of an open event. I like the idea of doing that, it's important to me as we talk about how we we shake this up. I'm, I understand the concerns about, you know, getting someone, getting the process started right away. Uh and having someone on as soon as we can. I am I think I, from the the references and and the framework that that Sarah was able to get for us, I think I lean towards SGR, but I think I'd be happy with either alternative to the extent that we can coalesce around something tonight and and move forward. And in terms of the the order before us, this we approve this and then the the council chair would negotiate with one of these two fir- with the firm that we choose. Are we gonna need to amend this tonight to direct Jeff to, okay? So I, it sounds like we're gonna reach it, try and reach consensus on which one we prefer and then approve it and have Jeff move forward.
Yeah, I suppose I'm uh I'm leading SGR as well, only because it's just a little cheaper, um while still being a very competent organization that can do everything that we need them to do. Um I hear you on the start date issue and I, that does give me some pause. Uh I don't have, I don't feel very strongly in direction, I suppose. Um so I could, I could be convinced to go with Baker Tilly. Um I I would like to see, I mean, in the interest of reaching consensus, I think we're gonna get a really competent organization either way, but I guess I'm leaning more SGR.
Can, I raise, I don't know if we heard from Matt yet, but um I also, I also like the idea, these firms are gonna help us build our capacity to engage with the community in line with our, with our service promise, but I wanted to just raise a question for all of us before we, what are our concerns about uh the election in March in terms of some of us will be, you know, I I don't know who's running. Um but there are three of, three of our seven seats are open this March and I'm not pointing anywhere on the spot, you know, at the but at the same time, it's, it could likely be that some of the people that start the search aren't on the council when we end the search. So are there concerns or questions that we should think about as a council with that? And I mean, the calendar is what calendar is. So I think either firm ends up running up against the election in terms of um, you know, the end date for Baker Tilly is Monday, March fourth, which is the day before the election. And the end, you know, the first end date and the end date range for SGR is not until the middle of April. So I I just wanted to raise that as a question, not a caution as much as just a question.
So the question is, do you think that, is there a concern there? I mean, I I don't.
I was just gonna say, I asked both firms about that and they indicated it's something that they frequently deal with because they work with municipalities. I do think that there are logical places to, as we build our timeline with them. Um you know, it wouldn't make sense to, it would make sense to try to like wrap up the semifinalist choices before the election, so that whoever got elected in, if there were new counselors at all, came in with a slate of ten that we were looking at, not that we were in the middle where they missed the first five and then the second five. Does that make sense, Leo? Um but like both firms are, it's easy to do that. You just work with them to say, here's the election, here's when people are likely to be sworn in. And, you know, coordinate the timing as much as we can so that a logical place hits, but um they both did indicate. And I don't have the timeline. Dan, what's the range for Baker Tilly? Is it March fourth to March seventeenth or something? Is that right?
March fourth to April one, was there?
April one, okay. So either one is gonna overlap, but I did raise it with both of them. That's all I wanted to say. Everyone else might have different opinions. I think it'll be okay.
Yeah, I I um I like the the reach that SGR has, so that tips me just slightly in that, in that direction. But they're both good companies. Um in terms of like elections, I think we just need to make the best choice that we possibly can, because we're the elected officials now. And some of us may be here, some of us may not, and they'll uh make the best choices going forward when that happens. That's the, that's all we can do. And so um I I think for me, if we can work with either company and they're, and they know this coming in, then we just make the best choice possible and move on. Jeff.
Um so I I definitely favor national search. I think the the broader we cast in at the better, excuse me. Um I'm sort of agnostic between SGR and Baker Tilly. I have been tending a little bit towards Baker Tilly for the same reason that Leo expressed, is that I I really think we've told people we're gonna start the process as soon as possible. We have a firm that can start a little bit sooner. However, if um if we wanna save a little bit on our cost, just in case our search goes longer and we have to spend more on the backend, it wouldn't break my heart to support SGR. Uh I also like the flexibility that SGR provides. Being a little bit sort of more um malleable with the way there's they're willing to structure meetings and and community events and things like that. So I, I'm gonna have to sign off shortly and I won't be around to vote. I would just um encourage you, however you vote, to to take a good look at the two national firms. I really think they give us the best opportunity for us to get a great candidate. So.
Sonya, have a question. Sonya, have, did you raise your hand, Tony?
I did, but it's, it's all right. My, I don't think it's important enough to shout out. Appreciate.
People willing to entertain a a motion on, is that the right, is the right?
There's pretty clear consensus, I think, for SGR, so do you, is that what we have to do on motion? Just adding SGR in there?
Yeah, okay. So I, I would move, and do we need, Sophie, would you advise us to do anything here about waiving our procurement or anything like that? Okay, no, thank you. Um so I would, I would move that we amend order twenty-three, two, one, seven to authorize the town chair to execute an agreement with SGR to provide professional services to support the Orno Town Council search for a new town manager.
Second.
Second.
Um just by saying that, I assume you mean SGR with their strategic resource, blah, 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 of X Texas to do that?
Sure.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Motion seconded, uh all, all in favor. Uh oh, we gotta do a roll call vote?
We have to do a roll call vote and just to remind folks, you are in fact voting on the amendment at this point. Counselor Wingard.
In favor.
Counselor Berthasell.
In favor.
Counselor Marks.
In favor.
Counselor Powers.
Favor.
Counselor Laraway.
Favor.
Counselor Demerit.
In favor.
Counselor Kenny.
In favor.
That sounds like it is unanimous.
All right. Now, I I move the I move order um move can I call, can we call it? Well, you wanna call it or?
Yeah, uh so wait, what do, what do we have to do now?
Still have to approve, we have to approve order twenty-three, two, one, seven as amended.
Okay, that was two, okay. So motion to approve order twenty-three, two, one, seven as amended.
So moved. Second. And I think we need to take another, another roll call.
Counselor Wingard.
In favor.
Also Berthasell.
In favor.
Counselor Marks.
In favor.
So Powers.
Favor.
Counselor Laraway.
In favor.
Counselor Demerit.
In favor.
Counselor Kenny.
In favor.
You asking?
That again would be unanimous.
That's a surprise in there.
Yeah, so mix it up. Perfect.
All right, well done. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Sarah, for all the work you did, really, all the groundwork you did to make.
Um can I just ask that all communication with regard to this be forwarded to me so that I can put it in a public file, because this is important enough that we should have a an actual file if people come in and wanna see why council picked what firms and what firms were looked at.
Yeah, great.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, council chair and town manager reports. Jeff, I don't know if you have anything?
I don't have anything and and I'm gonna wish you all well. I'll try to jump back in into the executive session later on. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Charlie.
Leo, I also have to go. I have travel I have to get to. Um so I'm gonna sign off at this point.
Okay.
Miss you all. Thanks.
Thanks, Sarah.
You ready for me? So um couple of things, um the first is that um you guys got an update from me, which I assume you read that talked about Forest App. We've got some people here with, I think, some questions that I think I clarified some of, but just so it's on the record, um our public works director could not reach an agreement with the engineering firm that addressed the concerns that a resident um raised with regard to the lower portion of Forest App. By lower, I mean it's really not lower, but be to the in-town portion between Mount View and um Bennet Road. So we went ahead and still constructed the two that everybody was in agreement with, the rapid flashing beacons. As we stated in the first, second e- letter that went out. Um those are on back order, so they will be here in the spring, can't put them up um once the ground freezes.
Question, are those just going shot bush?
Yeah, so the ones that are signed as crosswalks are, will also get rapid flashing beacon.
So the one at the top, the one going to Mount View?
Yes, yep. Anything that's, that's a crosswalk will get a rapid flashing beacon. Talked with um Dan Merrill, um our police chief who um understands that um slowing people down only for that one section of the road is not ideal, so we're gonna continue to do um traffic enforcement there, and it will also give our newer officers, which we have a lot of right now, opportunity to make their stops. Um so that will be, that will be good. Um so we finished that. Um the um it has been a really busy week and it's already, and it's only Monday, so um we are in the final countdown. We are interviewed the last three, the final three candidates for Nancy's position. So we're looking forward to um having an announcement with that, hopefully by the beginning of next week. Um and I've also reached an agreement with Nancy, a per diem agreement for her to come back and um train um since it has taken a while. Um I would like to recognize our staff. I think one of the people that I didn't anticipate being as uh impacted by Nancy's departure is um Shelley, our town clerk, and she has really risen to the occasion. Um I'm a little bit nervous about her workload. Um I think she'll try to take everything on, but I think it's too much for a single person, and I think we need to kind of discuss some of that. Um but she's been doing a great job and Jess Mason from um the police department has actually been providing admin support to um the town manager's office, so she is why we've been able to get agendas out and letters out. The other person, other department I really would like to recognize is um finance. Um Trish Davis is a bookkeeper in finance and she has really stepped up with the tax collector roles. I think we're gonna be in a really nice place to turn those authorities over to finance um next week. Um I don't know if people have seen, but there's, there continues to be chatter on emails. Um email listservs and Facebook around how horrible it is that the garbage truck is picking up both trash and recycling with one truck and we're lying because it's all just being sent to the, to the landfill. I I'm just, I wanna make sure we have this opportunity to remind folks that Pete, um our communications person put out a really nice short video that shows exactly the internal mechanism in that compartmentalized truck that shows it stops, it puts the the lever goes one way, it drops trash, it goes the other way and drops recycling, and I can assure people we are still getting that really high recycling processing bill that I know Rob is making sure actually. And um finally, I just wanna put it on council's calendar that next Thursday from eleven thirty until one thirty, we're gonna have the annual employee recognition luncheon. If you plan to attend, please let me know so we have food for you. Um we took it a little out of order this year. Staff actually approached Counselor Wingard and asked if he would be all right with us moving that back to November, so I can have my final staff recognition luncheon with the team. So we're gonna do that on Thursday. Um like I said, just let me know if you can come, eleven thirty to one thirty, we will have a plate and a chair for you if you are SVP.
Can you say the date once more? That's this Thursday? No, it's a week from Thursday?
Yep, not Thanksgiving, November thirtieth, eleven thirty to one thirty. And if you are SVP, I'll tell you where it is.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. It is secret. Um beyond that, I think we're just working towards um next Monday is a big meeting. I met with Sebago Technics to talk about the logistics of the public safety building um report out, and I think that's gonna be a really interesting meeting. The public safety building um report out and I think that's gonna be a really interesting meeting. Um and then after that, we've got a variety of, I would call it administrivia. Um votes at special council meeting for counselors to take. That's all I have. I think it's enough.
Thank you for the email update. I thought it was really good.
Thank you. Um we are now taking public comment.
Let's do it from here.
Just again, could you state your name?
Uh Sean Smith. I'm, I showed up just to check on the status of the traffic calming measures. I was a little confused on the implementation of two of the uh measures up in the top. Uh noise was always on the list of crosswalk there and then there were some issues with the ones in the lower section, as you mentioned. You clarified that, what's going on and already uh to an extent, I was wondering if we're, you said that there's a letter that's been sent out, which I probably have on my. Uh in my mailbox now, uh I'll send out Friday.
Yep.
So then I'll wait to ask more comments, except for the fact that I was wondering if there's uh a not a revised plan that it would be put forward with all of the measures. That are in one consolidated plan.
So I think Rob's intent is to hopefully get that plan for the bottom part, which we would highlight. Um and uh initially, we thought we would put it just up on the website, but since there is a delay. Think our plan, our, our intent would be to send out, just like we did last time, with a general idea of when we think we can do it. Where it is and give opportunity for feedback, understanding that we've already done the feedback once. We would be hoping to be able to build.
And so the, a budget uh that we put forward for these is still in the motion. I don't know when that budget expires.
So the beautiful thing about infrastructure budgets is that Rob sweeps that into an infrastructure reserve. So even if it goes over the fiscal year, which I don't think would be his intent, but I don't wanna make promises. Um he can simply reach back in and get the remainder of, so we're in good shape with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for the responses so far on the problems, which is a dangerous one, so.
Yeah, well, I would say you're just missing the third musketeer. Um Sean and Bob and Doug. Were the drivers behind this and when I said, well, maybe it would make sense to get the community together. They uh packed council chamber, there was no more room and we had a great meeting, I thought. And um really got to understand what the issues were, which then helped Rob um come up with the best kind of solution. So uh this is a definitely a case of neighbors getting together and working to solve a problem with the town. Very impressive.
Yeah, I appreciate that. When, when did that start, Sophie?
Oh, we started eighteen months ago.
Right?
Yeah.
And then Rob, Katie, uh collected data on.
Yep.
Traffic speeds. Speedometer and.
What?
With baseball gun.
Yeah, what is so funny is that we collected um speeds off those speed signs. And crunched the numbers and put them up at a meeting and then Sean puts up his graph with baseball gun. And we were within just miles an hour of each other. The only thing they didn't get was the car going eighty-six miles an hour at one AM. But other than that, yeah.
Katie sleeping, Rob was sleeping on the job.
Had time for a smoke break. But uh, so there was a fatality up by the ninety-five bridge and so that one of those treatments so far has been up that way. And there was another, I believe there's another accident at Shad Bush, and then there was an accident further down uh towards the lower end. And there may have been a few others, but I, those are the ones that I know of. So these are important responses. Thank you for your attention to it and thanks to Rob. For uh, for all the responses on the emails that I sent.
Yeah, thanks for, for spearheading that effort.
I just, I think the, thanks for coming tonight and uh thanks for all your work and I appreciate the town working with the the neighborhood. Um and I think the letter that went out, I just emailed to your address, so I. The, I think the letter that went out is is a, is a good example of communication. I appreciate the, the town being responsive to folks, so. And we'll keep watching it in the spring once um, once construction season starts back up again. And we have a policy, just to put it on the record, we now have a traffic calming policy that also resulted from this. So we built, not only rebuilding infrastructure on your street to make your neighborhood better, but we built a policy that neighborhoods throughout Orono will be able to use. Come together and consider concerns that may, they may have.
Yeah, I thought that was excellent.
Yeah.
That policy was well thought out by Rob also. Thanks again to you guys and thanks for Rob.
I do wanna just say that there is a policy there. Um I would encourage people to always start with a call to Rob. Um when they think they need something before they enact a huge policy, because sometimes it's already in the plan. Sometimes there's a reason why, um like if a bunch of people collected those same kind of signatures. For outer forest on the other side, we couldn't do what we did um because of state roads. So I just, I, the policy I think is there to guide um if. But I, I think that that first check-in with Rob would probably save a lot of heartburn and a lot of extra effort. Um just to understand, like, Main Street as an example, you could collect all sorts of signatures and do the policy. And we would tell you it's in planning and part of a larger project, so. Just call Rob, win it down, call Rob.
And Sophie, I thought you ran the great meeting.
Thank you.
So it's, it's very well run and it made us feel like we were actually engaged with the process, so.
That is the aim.
Uh any other public comment? Is there anybody online?
No hands raised at this time. No hands raised, yes. That's the question.
Um, all right. That ends the public session and now we need a motion to move into executive session? Is that right or no?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh motion to move into executive session pursuant to one MRSA four, five, six D to discuss. Collective bargaining with the Maine Association of Police, Association of Police, Orono Unit. Um do I say them all or does?
Well, this is what I would suggest. Hold that thought. Um we also have an executive session pursuant to sixty to discuss collective bargaining with IAFF Local thirty-one oh six. And we also have an executive session pursuant to four oh five, section six C. To discuss negotiations related to a proposed economic development project. It is my, I anticipate that at least two of these will result in action items next week. But that none of these will result in action items tonight. My suggestion to you, given our technology limitations, is that. Once we go into executive session for the first one, we cut the feed. The minutes will reflect how long we're in and out of the sessions and adjourn, and adjournment. But I would um not plan to come back into a public session that is televised. But that's up to you. You're the bosses.
That sounds good. I can't, there's no reason to. Okay, um you know how to flip over, Sonya? I take it?
Before you do that, let's make sure we. Have a, have a vote.
Motion.
So, so moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, uh.
Counselor Berthasal.
In favor.
Counselor Powers. Counselor Laraway.
Favor.
Counselor Demerit.
In favor.
Counselor Kenny.
In favor.
So that is unanimous. I need um probably five solid minutes to do the switch over here. Um but that was a chance for a break and then we'll set you back up on the big TV if you will come in. Thank you.
See you in a minute.